I want to call the City Commission, Beating to Order. Today, our invocation will be done by Marshall Pacella and the Pledge of Allegiance. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Caitlin Squires. We'll begin our meeting with roll call.
Mr. Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Spillman.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Mayor Gayle.
Here. If you would like to join us, please rise.
Dear God, thank you for our country that has freedom in our city, which is a safe place to live. Thank you for loving us and giving us what we need. Thank you for the people who are willing to serve and make tough decisions for our community. We thank the mayor and our team commissioners wisdom as they lead our city. We ask your blessing for everyone who is here in our city and nation. We ask these things of you this day.
Amen. Ailin? Come on forward. Then you'll face the flag and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys both.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. That was a really good prayer. I may, you may want to copyright that. Being here. Thank you for coming out tonight. Don't be surprised if you hear it again by one of them.
Here you go, Caitlin. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you to the one.
Do we have any motions or deletion to the agenda?
No.
We have approval of the agenda as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Moving forward, this is recognition of visitors. Thank you. Do these first, right? Bob Matthews.
Just.
Come forward.
Consideration for the change.
Okay. Cliff Gottlieb. Cliff, come forward.
What?
Yep.
How are you?
Heard about the bridge deal, so I went out there and they had a real nice sign. I must put there by the government, I think. I don't know how many of y'all have seen it, but I wrote down a bunch of this stuff. They call it the Arkansas River Trail. And it's a fairly large sized sign that they have. It's below that, it says Chestnut Avenue Access. And it's by the National Park Services. The cooperative efforts of the following people that have their emblems there. Was the Arkansas Wild Scope, Arkansas City, it's another one. Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parkly and Tourism, Parks and Tourism. And then Arkansas River Coalition. And the Sport Fish Restoration. And I didn't realize that there was that much national stuff. And I didn't know if at this point, well, there's another paragraph there. With your help, we can all maintain and improve the Arkansas River quality for outdoor opportunities and it has to offer and for years to come. And my question is, with this much enthusiasm on everybody's part that's there, have they contacted the Corps of Engineers? Because I know the big concern is when we have flooding that the road west is bad, but where the river joins with the Walnut River, usually both of them are up and in flood stage. But the Corps of Engineers might come up with something that could relieve some of that back pressure from the flooding. And I didn't know if anybody had checked with the Corps of Engineers, but that's what their job is. They have to survey and complete, when they have lakes, the dams have to be certified by the Corps of Engineers.
I know that property right there by that bridge is, you know, we got that several years ago, that wildlife thing, you know, where they have a boat ramp down there where the airboats can go in the water and so forth. I mean, that's what that was all about. And, but you're talking about that, or you're talking about the bridge?
Yes.
I think with regards to the bridge, I mean, I don't know if any of us have directly spoke with the Corps of Engineers. I would suspect they would be more concerned with the Madison, the West Madison Bridge, I guess you'd call it, because it's more, it's used by cars. They probably aren't.
It has to be a highway.
It's a highway, yeah. I would suspect they would probably say, we need to fix, be concerned with this one. And one way to maybe do it would be not have that. I don't know. I mean, I've not spoken, but I would assume they'd be more concerned with the one with cars on it than the one that's not really quote in use. I would suspect, but.
With my friends, it seems like half of them are wanting to tear it down. The other half wants to try to do something to at least keep it. Did they have a picture of that? Oh, I'm saying it in the road, I'm sorry. But that's, I think it was built in 1314, I believe it was the date they built that. That was before World War I, so. It's a real heavy duty structure and it has withstood several floods. But no, Bob was real concerned with the driftwood as it comes down.
Well, that's probably what the, that's what Bob said. I'm not, I mean, I'm not quoting, but he told me that that driftwood catches there and it puts a lot of dampness on our new bridge, you know, because it doesn't go through, it catches it in it, you know, and then hits our other bridge and stuff. So, I don't know. I think the, I don't know, Cliff, what to say about it, you know? I mean, it's a beautiful old bridge, but, you know, for us to try to take it back, you know, as far as the city, I mean, it's too much liability for our parts, you know?
Yes. It's really all about the funding.
Yeah.
Is what it would be, because after each high water thing, they would have to go in there.
Clean it up.
And there's a bunch of it that's in there right now.
And it's not a cheap process. We just had to do it on the east side of Madison Bridge. And we had a grant that took a big chunk of that cost out for the East Madison, which I think Pike Construction did that.
$100,000.
It was a lot. We only had to pay, I think, 20% of it, so.
But that was the main thing, was because it is a funding problem, I think, more than anything right now. But one thing I saw was the wind field. When they tore down the West 14th Street Bridge out by the fairgrounds, why, they like to never knock that thing down. It was, it took dynamite and everything else to finally get it to go down. And this one was built pretty close to the same time. And the structures, you know, the way they're laid in there are very professional. They did it better then than they do it now, I think. But that's just my personal opinion.
The problem is, you know, if you couldn't, you know, the problem is it's condemned right now and you can't really drive across it, even though it might be, you know, drive, you know, but if somebody ever got hurt on the thing, I mean, that's a classical lawsuit, you know, because families already condemned it, you know? I mean, we can't drive across it, you know? So I.
And that's more funding, you know? But I don't know, I'm not that familiar with the financial help that the Corps of Engineers go. But I thought before they take the wrecking ball to it, why, maybe they can check it out and see if there's any good news.
I have a question. I have a question. I have a question. Have we? Did I sleep with that? I heard that the county came up with this brilliant plan to offer the bridge to the city of Arkansas City. And this conversation sounds like we've already said, yeah, we'll take it. Have we said we'll take it?
No.
So is the conversation about saving the bridge, or is the conversation about whether or not we would even? I mean, does anybody here have a penny? Say no.
No. Okay.
So. If they offered it for a penny, we can't pay. We don't even have a penny to pay it for.
Well, the problem is too much liability.
Well, I'm just saying, so. So we don't have to say, yes, we're going to take it. Is that what I understand? Okay, so, so.
I think, I think at least some of us have expressed the liability being an issue and we already have enough other infrastructure to worry about in our community. We don't need to be taking on.
My question is, why are we going to save it? What's the purpose of it? Yes, it's an old structure. There's lots of old structures downtown, but they still are in use. They still have some life to them. This is just something that's.
Doesn't lead to private property on the other side?
And haven't they closed the road on the other side? And done away, I mean, the property for that road's going back to the landowners, the way I understand, so it's a bridge to nowhere.
So does it come with a dowry? I mean, they want to give, what does it come with?
Yeah.
Are they willing to, are they willing to allocate some funds to the city?
No.
For future maintenance or to cover the exposures liability? I'm just, I think we have to get to, is that a good thing for us to do before we decide whether or not it needs to be kept up? Right now, it's not our decision.
It's not our decision, unless we decide we want it. And I don't think any of us really want the bridge.
I think the reason the county commissioner reached, had, Lucas reach out to me was that the folks that were at their last county commission meeting that were concerned were from Arc City. But I would remind everybody that those folks are also county residents and it's still a county issue. And so pushing it back on the city, just because the people concerned are from Arc City, isn't really the answer. They're still, you're still a Cali County resident, whether you live here or not.
Well, so if it were, if it were in good standing, if the bridge were in good shape, if the bridge were brought up to some safe codes and liability issues had been addressed, it would be, but functionally, this is not about, this is not about a bridge. This is about a bill. And so the question is, do we want to take on a bill? You know, a financial obligation from the county, you know? And that's why I asked playfully, is it, does it come with a dowry? Or they, you know, they gave us back Summit Street, but they gave us a dowry. You know, something to go with it to get it up to speed. We got an overlay, we got some funds to maintain it. You know?
I just think it's kind of a mute issue, this bridge, unless from the city standpoint, unless we decide we want it back and we, I don't, I don't think.
That's, that's what I'm doing.
I think it's a county issue, not a city issue. So I don't really think our discussion means anything, because we're not really, I don't think in favor of taking on.
The liability.
Liability of the bridge.
You had an approximate, approximate figure of what it would cost.
Well, I've heard opinions, and I believe there was, it was getting close to a million dollars to get it into repair and do everything that needs to be done to it, but.
And then that's, that's still not going to make it safe for everybody to cross. It's just going to make the bridge safe.
Yeah, yeah. Again, and I don't know, I don't know.
It's got to be safe enough for somebody who's two and a half foot tall to six foot tall to go across that thing.
I just feel like there's really a lot of discussion.
If I was going to do the bridges, the East Chestnut Bridge is one we need to concentrate on. That's where we have 15, 1600 people cross that thing a day, you know? The county owns that and it's just going to heck, you know?
I mean, it's just like, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Will we still have a bridge that doesn't go anywhere? Yeah. At the end of the day.
Yeah. What's the story that we read in our childhood about the guy whitewashing the fence and making it look so attractive that?
You know, I just.
It's, it's not a, right now, sir, it's, it's.
Madam Mayor.
Right now, it's not a bridge, it's a bill.
Right.
And, and the question is, are we willing to undertake a bill?
Cliff, I have a thing that you might want to do. The county owns the bridge, there's nothing we can do about it. But you might want to go back to the county and see if they, have they contacted, you know, the Corps of Engineers? And, and, you know, let them talk, you know, the Corps of Engineers. We can't do it because we don't own the bridge, so we don't even listen to us. So I think what you need to do is go back to the county and, and ask them about, will you contact the Corps of Engineers and see what they say about the bridge?
Why, no. I've been Arc City for a long time.
Yeah.
And the worry is not really too deep on the other side of the bridge. And that would be future businesses, maybe. I don't think over there, if the Corps of Engineers can relieve that back pressure that happens when it flows into the the Walnut River. That pressure is, is really.
Sure.
More to be.
But that's a county and the Corps of Engineers, you know, thing to do.
Yes, I think they, they're probably the deciding factor. I met with them once up there, you know, that's where I first heard about the bridge.
Yeah.
And, and if it's meant to be, it will happen.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. And we are through that. So.
Consent agenda.
Well, we have one more. Bob Matthews.
He wanted to wait for the new, he wanted to wait for the new business item, I think.
You want, he wants to wait for the new business item? Okay.
I think, didn't you want to wait till we got to an item? Yeah, I think so.
All right, so consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented, which in approval of the January 18th, 2022, regular minutes is written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Full business.
Consider resolutions adopting by reference the personnel policies and guidelines manual for the city of Arkansas City.
Better Mayor, I mean, we accept the personal policies and guidelines manual for the city of Arkansas City as written.
Okay, and I know there were some changes that were asked, those get implemented.
So all changes, all suggestions, everything is, is in the book before you.
All right, I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the policies, procedures, and guideline manual for the city of Arkansas City. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next.
Consider first reading of a charter ordinance exempting the city of Arkansas City from provisions of KSA 14-1502 as it relates to the residency requirement for appointed officers.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and Commissioners.
Yes.
As you all know, you appoint several people by statute, including city attorney, city judge, city clerk, city treasurer, police chief, fire chief, and other officers that you might deem necessary. And the statute that follows that makes a residency requirement in the city of Arkansas City within a two mile radius. In conjunction with or flowing from the policies that you just, just approved, we were asking that and recommending that you do away with that requirement. We live in a different time, we live in different space. And my other job, I just interviewed somebody yesterday that lives in Wichita and she says, can I still live here in Wichita and work in the county attorney's office? And I said, absolutely. We have Zoom, we have telephones, and travel is faster. I think that historically, the reasons for that was a limitation on time, space, and communication abilities.
I thought, I thought we changed that. I remember eight, seven, eight years ago, we had that same issue and we changed that.
I, I thought that, I was surprised that that hadn't been done by now. Other cities have, but we do not have an ordinance, because I.
You need the charter out.
Yeah, it's a, it's a charter ordinance and you have a copy of that ordinance in here, which was well done. Thank you very much for that. And so just recommend that this is the time for that. And it flows well with what you just did with the handbook and all of that, because it really goes to the heart of, from this point forward, who are you going to be able to get to work for you in days to come, as there are fewer and fewer attorneys in the city? And as they're, you're asking somebody to live within the city limits that may want to live on a farm and still be able to be here in 10 or 15 minutes. It's just a common sense thing that I think is a well-placed time with what you do with the handbook.
And as we all know, we're in a very competitive marketplace for work right now. There's a lot more jobs than there are people. And I think we always need to be focused on who's the best qualified for this, for these positions. And, and so sometimes the most qualified person may not live within our city limits, but these are, the type of jobs that Larry listed are very important jobs and we need to qualify people to hold those positions.
Comment?
Any additional discussion?
I, I. I heard, I heard reference, an illustration of Wichita. Are there, would there be any parameters? I mean, are you saying not within the city, within the county? Are you saying within a reasonable access?
I think a lot depends on the position and the response time needed.
Do they live in Flint, Michigan?
I don't, I don't think that would necessarily be.
I mean, they could Zoom from Flint.
They could, yeah.
I think, I know when we did it back 18 years ago, like, the fire chief had to be within 10 minutes of where he lived at. I know we put some time limits on that thing, because we had that same discussion.
So we do have response times.
Yeah, response time.
Position level, but not on a policy level.
Okay.
We do have response times for each position.
Okay.
And also to Commissioner's question there, really that can be determined in the hiring process. Right, if you have someone from Flint, Michigan, and you have someone from Winfield, Kansas, or wherever, I mean, you know, you're, you have a decision then to appoint if you want the person from Flint, Michigan, or if you want the person that is closer.
Okay. Mr. Matthews.
Bob Matthews, 900 North D., Commissioners, City Manager. I have heard, and I don't know what the resolution was adopting, the new personnel policies. This has come up many, many times in Arc City. And I'm going from what was in the newspaper. Would be, unless you have an agreement with your city manager, you pass this ordinance, he can move to Winfield. He can move to something more. He doesn't have to live here. Do you really want an attorney out of Wichita to have to drive all the way to Arc City? To hear court cases, and you've got attorneys in Arc City? And he said, attorneys are getting smaller in Arc City. Well, maybe they are. Maybe we've got some new attorneys coming up that can fill those positions. But we're just opening this thing up wide open to let people go anywhere. I think you were right, Commissioner Warren, it have a response time. You know, if you have all of your police officers living in Winfield, Wichita, something, and you have a major disaster in Arc City, what are you going to do? Same with the fire department. What are you going to do? How long is it going to take them to come back in? Yes, I just heard something about a response time. If they live in Winfield, you got 15 minute response time, you're not going to make it. So I think it should be denied. And the city has, in the past, allowed people to live outside the city. It used to be, if my memory was correct, you had to have an Arc City telephone and you could live outside. Well, with the cell phones and all of this stuff, now you don't have an Arc City phone. You could call all the time. Your cell phone might be out of New Kirk, it might be out of Old Kirk. See, the area code, or anywhere, where it's coming. But I don't think you should open this thing back up so that it can just go anywhere. Yes, you can do a lot of it in your personnel. Whatever you can.
Could, could you put in there, for example, you, four years from now, 10 years from now, Randy retires, moves on, and you hire someone else, could you put in their contract, they must live within?
So the city manager position's different.
Yeah.
It's a contracted position, so, and it isn't my contract that I live within the city limits and.
And I, and I see the concerns he has, but I also see it as, we lose four attorneys here in Arc City, we have five left, and they'll say, I don't want to be city attorney. So do you force one of them, or then you got to find someone, where do you find them from? Then they're not in Winfield, they're not in, I mean, that's the concern you're raising is, because if all the attorneys in town say, well, I don't want to deal with that headache, I don't want to be involved with it, I, I'm done. And say, well, then where do you look next? You look at New Kirk, Pocahontas, Winfield. I mean, that's the concern you start, that's where I think this policy is going is.
Basically, it's all about attorneys, it's not from there, it's right?
Well, it's about even, it's a lot of people.
It's a lot of.
Some city employees too.
Well.
Comes down, a long time ago, it used to be, say, well, if Arc City paid, and I use you as an example, if we were paying your salary, shouldn't you live in Arc City? To help support Arc City, to help support your salary? That used to be the philosophy a long time ago. I don't remember now, it must have been 35 years since I sat on that side of the bench. And that was the philosophy at that time, but times have changed.
Yeah, they have, the people, you know. There's a lot of people don't want to live in Arc City, they want to live out in the country where they can have horses and, you know, have animals and that kind of stuff. I mean, you know.
Some people want to live here and drive to Wichita, work, and come back to the quiet life in the small town. I mean, it's just, it's a whole different game.
City manager, city manager under contract. I don't believe your fire chief is under contract. His chief is under contract. Anyway, I think it's something you really ought to consider before you draft, because you can get around. Thank you.
Thank you. So have we had issue where this residential has become a problem?
Yes. Actually, when, when my position was open, this prior body actually hired an attorney out of Wellington. And he, if you recall, and he decided he did not want the job. And no other attorney in Arc City wanted the job. It was posted out there. And so, you know, I, I don't know if I was flattered to be asked, or asked person that they thought of, you know? So I don't know if that's flattering, but anyway, I'm very happy to be here, very happy to have, but it did, that's exactly what happened, what Commissioner Rogers said. And there are people now, what is developing, and the gentleman that you hired, is that is a city attorney of many cities. And so it's sort of a developing as a, and there are municipal judges doing the same thing. Now, I don't, when you get to some of these other ones, there's not, but I think the point was made that maybe the treasurer, the clerk, or some of these others may just want to live just outside the city limits. And you can get here faster. It's not like they're riding a horse today to get here. Their response time is faster. And response times, I think, can be dealt with by policy. And anyone you want here, what could be your city attorney, or your city manager, or someone else, can be dealt with by contract, can be dealt with in personnel policies. And I think this motion that's before you is just to deal with it that way, rather than to, to deal with it in just a blanket statutory way. And because, as City Manager mentioned, you run into competition, you run into getting the best person. And you may run into whether you can get anybody at all. This is preemptive of that. Don't wait till that time to then have to rush into an ordinance when you can have it now, have it done with your personnel policies, and be done with it all at once.
I'll make a motion, I mean, this, yeah, I make a motion that we consider a charter ordinance exempting the city of Arc, Kansas City, Kansas from provisions of KSA 14-1502 as it relates to the.
from provisions of KSA 14-1502 as it relates to the residency, residencies, residency requirement for appointed officers.
I second it.
And I want to say something before we go on a vote. Is that I understand where Bob came from, and I commend you to come up and tell us that. But I think we're in different times and I've got to listen to Larry, what he's saying. And I think that we've got, you know, if you want good qualified people, you, you know, you may have to go outside, you know, to get them in. I mean, I, you know, it's just competition is, it's too great right now and stuff. And we can't, we're going to have to open up, I think, a little bit to get qualified people that wants to come in. And you can't tell them, well, you're going to have to live in town or you have to do this and that. And they're not, they're not going to be, they're not going to want to do it, you know? So I think this will help us, I mean, in this, you know, aspect.
And even if they live outside the city limits, they're probably going to be most of their shopping here.
Oh, yeah. They're still be involved in this.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I, the language of the motion on the floor effectively is that we would, that we would exempt ourselves from a state statute. It doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from establishing some param. I think it's important that we have some sort of, some sort of parameters around accessibility. You know, I mean, I, I used it kind of in, in a extreme situation to say Flint, Michigan. But I, I see, I see the potential for there to be, for there to form like some conglomerates of professionals who simply can market their services to like a rural South Central Kansas community and say, we can provide, for the example of municipal court judge services to you. And that conglomerate might be based in South Carolina. And we may get who they say is available to serve, whether it's on a case by case or whether it's on a rotating quarterly, you're going to have this person in this quarter and this person in this quarter. I think we need to have some sort of parameters.
Well, I think that's, that's a, you would hire as a commission, you'd want to hire that type of a, well, situation, so.
Well, I mean, but I, I understand, but, but, but we're, we're voicing this against a competitive market for professional services. And so once, once we start down this, I think, I just think there needs to be like a follow-up step where we say, but there are some parameters, maybe at least they live in Kansas, you know, type of thing.
I think you could do that during the hiring process, say, we're looking for a, a city attorney. And yeah, there's some groups all over the nation. There's a group based out of Topeka that focuses on rural communities that need a city attorney. Well, you'd probably pick, probably the Topeka group over that if that got to the, I mean, you could have it within, you could have parameters around, quote, your hiring process. I think that's where it goes. But I, I mean, I see what you're saying, yes. You are then stuck with some Mr. Smith who you never see or know and they don't know anything about your community, so.
Mr. Matthews?
Your new personnel policy, does it require you as commissioners to live in Arc, Kansas City?
We're not personnel.
We're not hired.
Not personnel.
elected, it's a different.
I don't think you're even eligible for election.
Yeah, we're not eligible for election.
Unless you're by statute.
Yeah, no, this isn't, this isn't.
You would come off the city commission.
Yeah. All right.
Then you would come off the city commission if you, if you were no longer a resident of the city.
You still have to be a resident of the city to be on the commission, correct with this?
Yes.
There's nothing.
That has nothing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I call a question?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we're ready to roll.
It's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jennings?
I or yes, which one?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Item two.
Consider ordinance authorizing the rezone of 600 South B Street from P Public Use District to C1 Office and Service Business.
Mayor, Commissioner, the school district has requested that the property at 600 South B, the former Lincoln School, be rezoned. Surrounding area is mostly residential. There isn't commercial on the Madison. This property is just under an acre. The project will be for a medical clinic, is what the proposal was. And the applicant's requesting the rezon from the public use to the C1 district. Part of the reason for that is that the clinic is not a public entity. And so they really cannot carry on any use under the public designation.
Now, run that by one more time.
The, the public use district, and the reason that was established was for our public, publicly owned properties to have slightly lesser regulations. And so properties owned by the school district, by the college, by the city, by the county and any other current entity will carry that designation. So when they sell a property like what they're proposing today to a non-public entity, then that automatically would mean that the property is not a compliance zoning regardless of what they're doing. And so that's why I had to take the rezon. What, what I chose when I was at staff, when I was writing this up as a staff report, was the most restrictive district that would allow the medical clinic. And so that's why the C1 was, was what was chosen.
Who's the, who's the county health center? I mean, what, I mean, who's the, who, what's that going to be? What kind of doctors? I mean, what's that going to, that's going to be in competition with our hospital, with our stuff we got here in town?
Community Health Center is in Winfield. I don't know if you're familiar with David Brazel. He is in charge of that. And it provides low income based on a sliding scale. Can't pay, they can pay. I would hope it wouldn't be in competition as our clinics would have, you know, people's insurance, people with, with, with other means.
Yeah, but we have to deal with the same kind of people too. I mean, here in Arc City, our hospital and our clinics too.
It is true, but, but the difference, the difference that Community Health Center has to offer is, is folks with no resources at all.
But they also have, they are taking general insurance.
Yes, they, yes, yeah, exactly. They take anybody.
This is, yeah.
On a sliding scale.
Right.
Right though, so is that, so if you have no resources, you pay probably zero. And if you have a job, you have to.
There's no zero, right?
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yes. I have some familiarity with the clinic because of some people I know that work there, so.
Yeah. That's something I'm, I'm concerned about that we haven't.
Clinics are already in, I mean, it's in Winfield. People go from here up there all the time for it.
Right. It's, they, they service a lot of Arc City. They're just trying to make it easier for people to access at our front.
Well, I, I really don't want to do anything tonight on this particularly. I want to think about this thing. And I want to talk to our administrator at our hospital and, you know, to, I mean, on this thing too. Because to me, it's going to be a competition from Winfield against Arc City. I mean, you know, I mean, it's just, I don't, you know. I'm just, you know.
The.
Just saying, Bob.
The other, other component to that, when we're talking about that, is, is functionally by state statute, SCK Health is obligated to provide those services to indigent patients. Those are 100% write-offs. Okay, so if they walk out there, they have a need, they can't turn them away. They have to do core services to them. By them, the services by, for staffing, equipment, supplies is the same as if someone had the best insurance in the world. But they have to write it off. Where, where this agency's funding mechanism is different and, and they're subsidized. So, so they don't charge the patient, but they're compensated through other funds. So, so it's, it, in some ways, it relieves the cost because it'll stop with indigent patients who would go to the hospital, provide services and take service.
Treatment time. You can hear, I'm sorry. Let me set, I should, let me recant. I can't recant it. I've said it.
But let's hear from the, I'm okay. Let's hear it from the administrator.
I think we just need to table, I mean, Bob, you had something to say?
It is in direct competition with the city county health department, which the city funds part of the city.
Yeah.
David Brazel was at one time with the city county health department, but Wendell White left, but he'd leave and he got funding for this. So he is in direct competition with something that you're already.
Well, I'll make a motion. We table this authorizing, our ordinance authorizing zoning of 600 B Street from the Public Use District to C1 Office and Service Business District.
Second it.
Is this for the, the question? Is this for the purpose of talking with the administrator at the hospital?
Talking with the administrator of the hospital, get some more information.
Would it reappear on our agenda after we're satisfied that he's had it on?
Larry, is that, we're doing.
I think that's very good. I think that that's a better step. I don't want to advocate for one another. I just want to make sure, I think I'm in the same boat you're in. I want to make sure that you all have all the information.
Sure.
And if you're not comfortable, I think better than just rejecting it tonight, to table it, take a look at it. Maybe talk to Mr. Brazel and to, to the CEO.
Well, I think what we ought to do is maybe have Jeff come to one of our workstations and talk about, you know, this thing. Because I know he's mentioned something about it. Does that, can we do that or not?
I think while we fact find that we can move forward, do you roll call on a table? Okay, so all in favor of tabling item? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
But he's the one that's getting somebody in the building.
Next.
Consider ordinance authorizing the city to approve change order number two about construction regarding repairs, maintenance, north pressure zone, high service pump station, $8,200.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, City Commissioners. We have a small change order. I want to give you the good minutes first. Pepper G has actually taken the power. Transformer anymore. So we actually had a 23, change order. Working Pepper G, we got permission. So first I want to tell you the same 23.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to tell you why we spent. It was a few changes we found as we opened. Getting close to the end of the stretch. An extra painting. Both were statistics and easier. We were leaving some small spots in places where water, we did do a lot of that stuff like that. So we decided we didn't do that. On the. Then we also found such a set meter for a pump station, wherever we get rid of two meters. One of them wasn't have to be the Catholic. And those. So we just, that was just.
So how far along on the, on this project? Are they getting midway through it or?
Oh, we're just almost there.
Okay.
Those projects, stuff gets held. We're waiting on three VFDs, one supposedly shipped, I think it should be. Once it gets in, we'll start installing it. But we haven't heard sure when the other team's going to ship it. This is what's going on everywhere. Then the inside painting. It was pretty dark in there. And to help. So that's where this.
How far, we haven't heard anything from that. I found out Wichita is going to do that, you know, our circulation or water, you know, we're doing that study.
Yeah, we've been in touch with them. The pumps, the pump stations actually hold that up a little. We want to get in offline, so when we.
So they can test it too?
Yeah, once, yeah, when we do the pressures, to calibrate the bomb, we have everything. Trying to do the plug stations.
You might explain materials that, that I think the reason why we're doing that station to get more pressure and more water to Creeksdale to fill that tank up faster, is that right?
That's correct. It's for both reliability and more volume. That's where this project is. We actually had, actually had a project ahead of it. That was the big pump station around the east. Of course, now we're, I'm leaning more towards the standby, revamping chest now, station. And that project ahead of this went to Creeksdale starting, so we did a flip flop.
And so, and so this is to meet their higher demands, right? Because I, I think we did something similar to that a couple of decades ago to get pressure to their, the north end. So, so, okay. And that, so that's, this is actually, it's, 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 you say $23,000, we have a modest change here. But it actually is good news because they're growing.
They're using a lot of water.
They're using lots of water.
I'd like to look at it like we're selling.
Yeah, water grows our future.
Well, that being said, I'd make a motion that we approve the change order number two with the Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated regarding repairs and maintenance to the north pressure zone high service pump station for the amount not to exceed $8,207.90.
Second, sir.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Commissioner's, I do want to point out that Rod is a birthday boy today, so anybody wants to serenade him or sing to him.
Yeah.
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 What are you, 25?
I'm not supposed to ask your age, but.
39, unholy.
And I've been 39 probably longer than Jack Piddy.
Thanks, Rod.
I hope your birthday is a special day.
You don't get the rest of it.
Okay, staff report.
Okay, there will be an optional pre-bit conference for the North Summit Resurfacing Project. That'll be at 1:30 on the Thursday, 3rd in the commission room. So that project's getting ready to start off here soon. And then on this, this Friday on the 4th at noon, I want to remind you that the, the students from the South Dakota State University School of Design and the K-State TAB, which is Technical Assistance for, will be here. They'll be here Friday and Saturday. They're doing the visioning for downtown. But we'll have a special meeting with the city commissioners at noon here in my office. And I'll give you guys special access to them and kind of share your vision with them.
They go to lunch?
Yeah, it'll be lunch.
Great.
Always will.
No, they'll be facilitating that Saturday, correct, too?
Yes, they will.
But I want to make sure we have some, we get a good goal or get some good ideas from input and make sure it's not just random thoughts.
No, it won't be. They'll be spending, so they'll be trial on Thursday. They'll be here Friday and Saturday on the ground. They'll be meeting with building owners and business owners downtown, meeting with the commission, chamber members. And then they'll do the community thing on Saturday, which was the next thing on the list from 11:00 AM to 12:30. And there'll be some kind of breakout sessions where they can. Um, and there'll be some, uh, kind of breakout sessions where they can kind of break the crowd down into smaller groups and kind of get ideas and then they'll bring them all back together and kind of merge those ideas. The Cali Rice Steering Committee will be ten AM on Tuesday, the eighth, County Courthouse. And there'll also be a Zoom option available. County, County Legislative Committee will meet at noon on February eighth um, at the Chamber of Commerce in Winfield. And then again, the next, uh, commission study session will be at noon on Friday, the eleventh in my office. And it's like we've got one more added that I played on that. So that's all I have. Yeah, I'll talk to you later.
Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Josh has a program that we'd like to.
I'm popular today. You're probably getting targeted.
Miss you.
FEMA has a program called the Community Rating System. It's a special incentive program that is for things, um, that people that have flood insurance. Uh, about fifteen hundred communities that participate in the program nationwide. Number exactly that's in Kansas, I think it's about four, you know, uh, that participate in Kansas as well. Uh, basically, what way it works is we do certain things. We have a flood plain ordinance already in the books. Uh, we do certain things in regards to our ordinance that, um, idea is to make people safer that live in a flood plain, that have property in the flood plain. Uh, our current ordinance is, is pretty good. We adopted it in two thousand and ten. It started to get a little out of date and it has some things that probably need to be changed in it. But the nice thing about this program is we can do whatever level change that we want. Some of the stuff that we would need to do to get to the lower end of it doing, we're not getting recognized for it. For this program, uh, at that lowest level, uh, just doing those things, we could get at least a five percent, uh, discount for people. Staff bills that we could probably take it up even a notch higher than that without doing a whole lot of change. Probably have to make some changes to our ordinance to make it happen.
Needs to be on their insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, their, their flood insurance they have to have if they have. Uh, to date, I checked and there are twenty seven flood insurance policies that are in effect in Arc City. Now, there's other properties that are in the flood plain um, that for various reasons, are hard to have insurance, maybe they don't have a mortgage.
Well, there's, there's several, or, or, uh, like Groves Old, are they in that flood plain too, where it flooded two years ago, I mean, that area?
Um, Groves? Think that they're actually not in it because they're protected by the levee.
Well, with that levy didn't go in. Okay.
Yeah, what happened there was.
Okay.
Basically, what I'm asking for today with one of the first step of the process is just to send a letter of intent or a letter of interest to FEMA to show our interest in the program. And what they do, the next step would be Division of Water Resources of the state would come down and they would do an audit of what we currently do. They may find that the, some of these programs were already doing them anyways as part of our current ordinance. Uh, so basically tonight, I am just asking for your blessing. Hook into that program. There's no obligation at this point because we have to pass through the audit process for it.
I think, you know, any, any way that we can help the taxpayers, you know, I mean, so it's a good thing if we get that properly, I mean, they get the insurance lowered like that. I mean, that's a great deal.
If we went totally all out, it can go up to forty five percent discount. Don't think we can do that. That would cause probably some extra burden. It's, it's more harmful and helpful. But it goes that high.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you need from us is a yes or no, or?
Basically, um,
I don't write the letter.
Yeah.
The letter I wrote, it's so that sign off.
Okay.
Stop looking at me. He's silent. Thank you.
Have any other questions?
Commissioners, any, any other questions that you want to have?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with I.
I.